Yeah, because I know that seems to be the way everybody is going with that last class.
Seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the council meeting in order. Ropel, Peterson?
Here.
Krupsek?
Here.
Shemansky?
Here.
Way?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Wenzel?
Here.
Coon?
Here.
First on the agenda is approval of the last month's minutes. We have three of them.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion second to approve the three previous council minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is treasurer's report.
The move is not gonna...
There's a motion second to approve the treasurer's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is citizens' forum. Here, to poll. And two committee reports. First is ways and means.
Ways and means has one meeting to report on. Move to accept the amendments printed with one change. For number five, after 1,087, would like to add the wording with an annual charge of 588 to maintain.
There's a motion second to approve the ways and means minutes as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacousa Common Council, ways and means meeting was held on Tuesday, the 13th of December, 2016, at 6:15 PM in the Nacousa Council Chambers. Members present were Emmett Peterson, chairperson, Robert Schultz, secretary, August Voyak, Garrett Coon. Also in attendance were Larry Krupsek, Robert Wenzel, Mayor Al Marco, Rick Schmidt, DPW, and Shawn Woods, police chief. Number one, we audited the bill list. Number two, we received the library report. Number three, approved applications for beverage operation licenses for Brandon Jacoby and Shane Waller. Number four, recommend purchase of a replacement printer for the city office for $1,159 from Bauerfind. Why do we have two different prices there?
Well, the next one sure has been a separate item.
Yeah.
Should we renumber those then?
Yeah. Five.
Yeah, that's six.
So number five is recommend the purchase of a projector for City Hall for $1,100. Number six, recommending hiring town web design to design city website for a cost of $1,087 with an annual charge of $588 to maintain it. Number seven, recommend amending ordinance 3.09 for purchases up to $5,000. Number eight, we discussed informational kiosk. Number nine, recommend renewal annual agreement with ILS for municipal advisory services. Are there any questions?
Joe, I was gonna ask a question about the printer.
Okay.
Is there any reason that the copier cannot be used to print?
The one that's in there right now?
It's not worked. It's not worked and we do use it. You bet. Would that be sufficient?
Well...
To have a printer?
Well, we had, I don't know, let's kind of step back. We looked at trying to move this other one that was in the other room in there and that was too big. But it's nice having that printer in there for high-volume copies. It really works out well for the tax. It's easier for Bobby and it's a good price.
Was it, yeah, I'm just thinking, is it a nice-to-have or a need?
Oh, it's a need, yeah. Yeah, it's a need for it.
So what are the functionalities of the printer that we paid for that can't be used?
You mean one in this other room?
Do we have a big, fancy copier there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, absolutely, no, that's...
It's like a multimedia...
It has scan capabilities, editable scan capabilities. It does have print. You know, does it use it as a printer or as a copier or the finisher? This doesn't have a finisher on it, but it's something that we feel that we want and we need. It's nice having that machine there for printing stuff if somebody else is using a copy machine for other stuff, you know? Like Bobby prints a lot of the tax or the water bills on the big machine, but the one that's in there. But having this extra capability is great, you know, before the machines goes down or for whatever, so.
Can you hold number four out separately?
Any other questions? Move to adopt items one, three, five, six, seven, and nine.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve items one, three, five, six, seven, and nine. Ropel? Peterson?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yeah.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Coon?
Move to adopt item four. Second.
There's a motion second to approve item four, the ways and means. Ropel? Schultz?
Yeah.
Way?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yeah.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Wenzel?
No.
Next is Public Works.
Public Works has one meeting to report on. I move to have amendments accepted as read.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the items of the Public Works report as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacousa Common Council, the Public Works meeting was held on Tuesday, December 6, 2016, at 3 PM in the Nacousa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Terry Shemansky, Garrett Coon, and Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco and Alan Schmidt from the DPW. Item one, recommend water credit to Julie Schenk for $265.44. Item two, discuss building inspection services. Item three, recommend adopting ordinance number 588, procedure on water disconnects. And item four, discuss project updates during closeouts. Just to bring everybody up to date on item three, that procedure's been in place for at least a year now, but through whatever error occurred, it didn't get put into our ordinances. So we just decided to okay it again and make sure that it did get put in, so everything's good now. If there's no questions, I'll move to adopt items one and three. Second.
Mr. Chairman, Larry, the ordinance that was typed up, Joe worked on typing up that revised ordinance or the ordinance, and one item that wasn't on there, and I had some discussions with Bobby about it more so today, is on when would disconnects be applied. In that ordinance that was originally looked at a year ago, a year and a half ago, it had in there, we would not disconnect anyone in the winter months. And in discussing that further with the clerk and I've talked with our water department, I've gotten some mixed, you know, let's say, people want to go in a couple of different directions. But I think that's something that we should take a little bit closer look at to decide, do we want to not disconnect anyone in the winter or do we want to follow our standard procedure and allow disconnects to occur if we need to for lack of payment for a period of time? So that became a discussion point internally just recently.
Are there specific regulations on that?
No, you just have to follow a clear policy on it and make sure that you apply it.
And I think we did discuss at the meeting now that it would be non-advisable to do that during the winter time just for the simple fact you could cause more freeze-ups depending on what your weather is and stuff like that. After a couple of years ago and all the mess that we had here with our water, everybody knows what can happen with that. You know, I mean, we had freeze-ups all over the place. And if you shut it off and dead-end it someplace, guarantee it's gonna freeze out. So as far as I'm concerned, we stick with the policy of no disconnects during the winter and then, you know, come summertime or come spring.
Deal with it then.
Yeah, deal with it then.
I'm 100% with you, Larry. I don't agree that we should be turning anybody off in the winter time.
Is that the way of policy states right now, is don't turn anybody off in the winter?
No, the policy doesn't state that now. That's not the current policy. That's the one that was looked at a year and a half ago and it never made its way into the ordinance. And the ordinance that Joe typed up didn't have it in it. And I talked with Bobby about it today and I think that's where, you know, there was some internal discussion, which is the right way to go. And if the council and the committee chair feels we should put it in or then we need to make sure we add it back in to item number five, that we do not do any disconnects for the winter months.
Well, I assume that's what we had, was the original one that we had.
It was in that one here and then this one was typed up to try to clean things up a little bit and that was one of the discussion points internally.
No, I would go back to, my opinion, go back to the original one that we had a year, a year and a half ago. And it has a wording in it and stay on that now. If everybody else is okay with that too.
Is there something that needs to be revised now or are we...
We gotta wait till next.
Well, I think you could go with this and then just add in section five, say, no disconnects.
Right, we would add in section five, you know, section C, print five. No disconnects would be made between what was in the original from November 15th to March 15th.
Need a motion at that effect?
We could just, if you want, we could just add, we could add it in here right now. Okay, it's section C on disconnection, paragraph five. It has right now, disconnects will take place on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, or Thursdays of the scheduled week.
Right.
Okay. And what are you saying now? No disconnects during the months of November through what or...
Right, the original policy that was looked at a year and a half ago, after that paragraph, scheduled week, it said, no disconnects will be made from November 15th to March 15th. So if the council wants to add that back in, then we need to add that to section five.
How about we go with November 1st to April 15th? Looks like that's what the Wisconsin regular, other utilities do.
I think November 15th.
The only thing we have to be sensitive is, I know, in talking with Bobby, just, you know, I know some of the, we've got a couple invoices already up over $500 and it's early December or mid-December, so we might have to deal with some issues like that where we don't really have any authority to make them pay in the winter. That's just the issue we'll have to work through, that's all.
No disconnects will be conducted, or what's the word there?
Well, the actual writing that was in the ordinance you approved a year and a half ago...
Slow down just a little bit here.
No disconnects will be made from November 15th to March 15th. That was the language that was in there a year and a half ago. Now, whether you want to change the dates, it's certainly up to you. The council's inside.
I think it's good.
Well, if it was approved once, then we're basically just taking it from policy and putting it into an ordinance form. No, you go deep in there, it should have been left in there, but whatever, so.
I mean, I never took them out. I mean, whatever copy was there was all I did, scanned it in, so.
Who on them?
I just said November 1st because it's the same thing that's what the rest of the utilities in Wisconsin have based on the public service portion, so.
Doesn't matter to me. I'm just saying, be consistent with that and everyone keep it.
15?
Right.
Well, more than one person has to agree with that. They'll just...
You did.
What else has an opinion?
You did.
First or 15? Raise your hand. I say the first.
Yeah.
15.
Everybody else wants to.
Alright.
Trouble maker over there. Always trouble maker.
Somebody said wants a no vote.
I'm just saying, you're just saying one of them. No one else is saying it. You're disagreeing.
I agree with that. Somebody says wants a no vote is appropriate unless there's one no.
We have a motion and a second to approve either or not.
Yeah. I'll make a motion.
I think we had, I think we had one and...
Yeah, one and three.
One and three?
Yeah.
I go with what Gus wants.
There you go.
Okay. That's how little we're ready to vote.
Yep.
Way?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yeah.
Okay, next is public safety.
Public safety has one meeting. The motion that the minutes being accepted is written.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the public safety minutes as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public Safety Committee meeting was held Tuesday, December 6, 2016, at 5 PM in the Nacousa Council Chambers. Number president, Terry Shemansky, Brad Hamilton, Emmett Peterson, Robert Wenzel, also in attendance, Mayor Al Marco, Shawn Woods, Dave Ryan Schmidt, Don Harney, Shetan Moody. Number one, Don Harney, Shretus Retirement Letter from Dennis Wolf from the ambulance department. Number two, recommend 10.122 coming nuisance premises and repeal 10.042 continuous violation ordinance. Number three, receive DOT grant for $4,000. Number five, recommend sending one to leadership school with Merle Compass Workshop in Appleton, January 25th, 26th, 2016, as per handbook.
That should be 17.
What's that?
2017.
Or 17, okay. Is that a correction? Okay. And recommend sending one to mid-winter training conference in the Dells, February 13th to 15th, again, 2017. Any questions? Make motion for number two, four, and five.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve items two, four, and five of the public safety report. Ropel? Peterson?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Way? Next is property recreation and human affairs.
The Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacousa Common Council make a motion to approve minutes as printed hopefully.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the property recreation and human affairs minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The property recreation and human affairs meeting was held on Wednesday, December 7, 2016, at 5 PM in the Nacousa Council Chambers. Members present were Robert Wenzel, chairperson, Emmett Peterson, secretary, August Voyak, Garrett Coon. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Alan Schmidt, DPW, Bill Caverly Jr., and Merle Cole Cochran. Number one, we discussed the status of Christmas in the park and its successful start. Number two, discussed pumpkin fest and their donations to various organizations in the city. Give them a thank you. And number three, discussed comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Number four, discussed cemetery updates and future plans. Just discuss stuff this way.
And for committee reports, anybody have anything for new business? First thing under new business then is Rick's request for some assistance at skate park, or skate park.
I briefly discussed this with Larry and as we're trying to gear up for the skating season, we did flood the rink today, got it set up, and a week ago, I started putting together who are we gonna hire? And in the past, what we've normally done is with any summer interns that we hire, if they come back, usually from college, they're in town for a few weeks, we pick them up for part-time work. Well, this year, our crew has pretty much moved on. We have one possible returner and I don't know if he's gonna come back in the summer, but I did talk with Nate Bros. He's going to UW-Locross. He did indicate to me he is gonna be in town for a couple of weeks and he might be interested. He's gotta let me know next week. But in order to fill, we can't get by with just one, sometimes not even two over there if we're gonna run a full skating season. So one of the ideas I had was, you know, maybe going to the high school. And so I talked to Larry a little bit about it and said, you know, what do you think? He said, well, this would be great to talk under new business tonight. What I did do is, obviously, high school, we have to be sensitive. I did talk to the guidance department and I asked them what kind of assistance could they provide if we wanted to bring in a couple of high school students. I said, could you vet them? Could you, I don't want to just hang up a sign in high school saying, hey, we're, you know, come on and, you know, let's interview. And they would be willing to maybe take a look at a handful of students over there that they felt could fit the bill, have responsibility, that we could sit down and I could talk to and see if they would work out for part-time employment for the skating, skate area. So what I'd like to be able to do is, normally, we have that place filled when it's open. You know, so that's, I guess, been our past practice is we always have someone sitting in there to, you know, keep an eye on the place, help out, you know, keep an eye on the facility. So that's what I'm looking for, is to see if that's a way we could go. So if Nate Bros can work. The other thing that we, I know last year we struggled with our college students is they were only in town for a couple of weeks. So as soon as they left, we shut the skating park down. So by mid-January, we closed it up, you know? So I thought with some high school students that we might be able to extend the length of the skating season a little longer, so.
How long looks on that to be there to work?
Well, that's for discussion, you know? I mean, we could stipulate if we want to make sure that they're at least 17, at least 18. They have to be a senior or that, you know, maybe they're planning on going to college in the fall and a possible candidate for a summer internship. All those things could apply, so.
Do you have a phone over there?
There is, we provide them with a cellphone.
God!
So what I'd like to be able to do was hire at least three people, you know, about, you know, at minimum a two. We should have three there. So if Nate comes on board for a few weeks, if he's in town, hire a couple of high school students. I'm kind of, you know, throwing us out a little bit to get everyone's opinion, but try to selectively hire a couple of high school students. I thought that might be the best way to handle it going into this next year.
Well, I'm sure to notice too, Rick, I think that'd be the proper way of doing things, is go over and, and they should know.
How many hours do you book a lot?
Well, generally, over the holidays, we're open. We try to be open, you know, throughout the holidays if we can. After the holidays occur, we try to stay open, you know, a few nights in the week and then the weekends, you know, Saturday and Sunday. So it kind of, you know, depends a little bit on the weather, depends a little bit on how many people we have, you know, from that standpoint. But the holidays, we try to be there almost daily just because every night we want. People are using it if they're off from school. Once school starts, you know, we try to selectively pick the days, but there's no set reasons with that, Larry. We can certainly decide what we want to do as far as, we want to be open, you know?
I just didn't know how many hours it went to day, because I'm really not that familiar with it as far as the...
We, last year, we tried to run two shifts, you know, because it's...
Okay, that's basically what I was asking.
It's a little bit of, I don't know, boring job. I mean, there's nothing there. You're sitting in that building. It's almost kind of a tough job, so I was almost thinking maybe you gotta put in the work, you know, starting to get them going, doing something outside or something. But during, on the weekend, we try to run a couple of shifts, you know, starting around noonish, whatever. They wrap up around four or five and then someone comes in till it closes at night, you know, 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock or so. To have someone sit there over eight hours is kind of brutal, you know what I mean? I think that would be tough to do.
One thing that Jim just mentioned was the possibility of somebody that's already like going to Midstate? That might be interesting?
All of that's good. The trouble, I think, a little bit is we got in pretty quickly.
Right.
I could call the guidance department at Midstate, send them a little letter saying this is what I'm looking for and see if some people wanted to apply. Do it the same at the high school, try to get two or three students in the area that would be interested and wanting to, you know, work for the month of January, maybe in the February, a little bit if the season looks like it's being extended a little bit.
Are there age limitations we're gonna worry about in this school?
As far as...
As far as them working?
Being too young?
Yeah.
I don't know, Shawn, is there any concern from your end from that standpoint?
Well, somebody has to have a work permit.
I don't know, please don't, but I think as long as they're 16 years old.
Yeah.
I think it's 16, Rick, that you gotta...
They're limited hours.
Actually, that question's a good one for Bart Darle, because she knows, she knows her...
What, the library?
Ages. I know, you've had to do something.
Yeah, they can only work so many hours during the week and then only certain ones on the weekends or something, so.
Well, do we want to give, I think it'd be okay to go after two or three people? And I was just gonna say, I mean, you're running one at a time no matter what, so. You're running, you're running pretty close to Hill Fryberg.
Right. Well, the season, you know, all of a sudden, you know, last year, it didn't start until January just because of the weather. Well, this year, we can get it going. It'd be nice if we could get it going during the holiday break and have some fun.
People should know that you can go there and skate even if the warm house isn't open.
Yes, that's correct.
This way you have the ability to use the warm house. And there's bathrooms in the...
Bathrooms in there and we have ice skates available in there. We have some hockey equipment, you know, they can have some fun there.
So you can use it, it's just...
I'll make a motion that we leave it up to Rick and...
I'll second.
Brad's not gonna...
Do you want to give a number to go after? Or any or... I think whatever feels comfortable, Larry. I mean, you can only work so many people.
Three would be enough, wouldn't it?
I would think so. I would think three would be, if we can get three part-time people, that way we, I think we can cover all the bases.
Okay. No more than three.
Okay, so basically it's to allow, to allow Public Works Director to hire up to three part-time workers at skate?
Skating.
Skatering, okay.
I'm a little cautious against the number because you might get people who could do it one night a week. I don't know.
Yeah. That would be a work energy because you're only waiting one time.
Yeah.
Because he's, leave it up to him. Leave it up to him.
Hill Fryberg.
To fill up the spot. You know, I mean, he's gonna, he wants to fill in a certain amount of hours every week for...
So are you saying that they take the three out or...
I would take the three out. Maybe women don't go, if you're gonna hire 10 people, you're still only gonna have enough.
Right, well, you want to make it, you want to make it that the people that you hire get enough hours that they feel it's worthwhile for them to spend some time, but yet they don't feel like they're committed and they're staying on doing.
It seems like three people to fill that all winter would be kind of burdensome.
It could.
You might have to switch out people. I can't do it anymore.
Take the number out of it.
Okay.
Right.
I don't know where that makes sense.
What if you expanded your search to other people, retirees, somebody you wouldn't have to worry about the two hours and so on?
Well, you know, that may be something Bobby take a look at too. I mean, is it, you know, I mean, we've been focusing on students, especially the college students and maybe now a few high school students, but it could be on the senior side too that someone might want to do something.
So like whoever, someone should, you know, if you go to a school or even other people, you should probably do some sort of background check on some of the people. You know, they are, they're kind of gonna be around kids and stuff too, so.
Well, I think anyone we hire has to have some check. We do consistently, just like we do at their summer interns. We have to go through some drug and alcohol testing. I mean, there is some procedures we have to follow. They have to fill out the proper federal and state forms, you know, there is a policy that way.
Just because we're pressed for time doesn't mean I want someone who might not be suitable to work there, working there.
Okay, go ahead and do a roll call. Krupsek?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing under new business that showed up here tonight is ambulance contract with the title Rome. They signed it. Terry looked it over, I looked it over. I'd like to have a motion and a second to sign this contract with the title Rome. Second. Roll call on that.
Have you done this for the other contractors?
No. This is the only one that, this was the only one that I think was gonna be changed. They wanted some different wording in there. I think that's, but as far as I know, we haven't done any of the other.
Did it go through the lawyer and all that?
Yeah, this was drafted by, Don had contacted one of the attorneys.
So you guys are comfortable with it?
Ready?
Yep.
Peterson?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Okay, anything else under new business?
You guys, please.
Going into department reports versus police department's monthly report. Motion second to approve police department's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Next is public works report.
Go move second.
Motion and a second to approve public works, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is fire department's monthly report.
Go move second.
Motion and a second for the fire department's report.
Again, Boon.
I didn't get one.
Didn't get one.
Oh, did you get one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There's two building inspection reports.
Go move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is committee senators report.
Go move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nothing from airport commission, next is the bills.
We have the three bill lists, Ways and Means two fifty, Airport Commission hundred and ten, Court of Appeals meeting six eighty, Camera Operator twenty.
Can we hold that one out?
Mayor, mayor's six hundred, Prop Rec two fifty, Public Safety two fifty, Public Works two fifty, Council one thousand four ninety-five.
Motion to approve the bill?
Yeah, second.
Motion and a second to approve the bills, roll call. Coon?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Anybody else have anything else?
Just one quick thing, Rick adds off to you and the Sturt, the city crew, I've got nothing but good, good words from everybody about the park and what it looks like down there. It looks really nice, guy did a good job setting everything up.
A lot of effort from everyone that, the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber, you know, did a lot of work with that, and, and the crew was dedicated, a lot of guys put a lot of time and effort into it.
Had a great fireworks, I had them paid for, it was really good. Really good fireworks.
And good job on the first snowfall.
We got more coming, I won't give a stop at any time soon. The guys were happy too, 'cause they both occurred on, on double time, so everyone was happy.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Richard?
Yeah, they were trying to get-